So freaking hot.
Because it's Tuesday.
Both of us are.
We're live.
We just finished Shannon's house. Ms. Vega, we did her house.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting in the City Council for August 19th, 2019. I'll be leading invocation and pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together to do the people's business. I pray that you grant us the wisdom to make those decisions wisely. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. We don't have any special guests and announcements. On the agenda, you are all special guests. But the next order of business is approval of minutes from August 5th regular meeting. You've got been provided a copy of those. If there's no suggested additions and...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Changes? We've got a motion and second to approve the minutes of the August 5th regular City Council meeting. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. Moving on to public comment, I've got two public comment cards. One is on an agenda item and the other is not. We will address the item not on the agenda. Mr. William Millard, I believe, hopefully I pronounced that right. You can come on down. If you could please state your name and address and you'll have three minutes, sir.
My name's William Millard. I live at 2409 O'Point in Marmell. I have a builder that's been building beside my house for about a year. I had issues with him that I kept trying to take care of with silk fences and he wouldn't do any... He kept saying he'd take care of it, take care of it. Then I had over six inches of mud in my backyard and my driveway, which I had to call the city to have something finally done. He got mad at me, saying that I didn't take it to him first when I got texts, videos, and everything showing him that, Brandon Holmes. And he blamed me for it. I've got a permit here where he filed for a fence to be put up, which he was gonna use the bill of assurance, where they showed... Where the bill of assurance shows you cannot go past setback lines on your side yard, but in the backyard you can. He lives... The house that's been built is in a cul-de-sac corner lot, so he has two front yards. The side easement road, which is actually the utility road for North Little Rock wastewater, he's building a fence right there on my driveway and the easement road. And it's causing me to have a problem with backing in a trailer into the third car garage. Not that I'm going on his property, but when you back up a truck or anything like that, your bumper, your front end of your vehicle, backing the vehicle, is gonna be past where your tires are. So you're gonna need a little bit more leeway room. And I even took a video of that to show that. I'm not asking the guy to pull it back five feet. I'm just... And I've asked very nicely to him, and I can show emails and texts where I've done this with him, very nicely, just asking him to push it back just a little bit to allow me to not have to worry about having more than $1,000, $2,000 worth of bumper damage because I accidentally hit his fence. I've talked to the city water, or Little Rock, North Little Rock city water, or wastewater. They've looked at it. They're, well, we don't think we'll have any issues, so we're not gonna make anything done. I've called the permit people. They said, well, we don't do anything about fences. We'll do something about the building where it sits, but not the fence. Once he gets the building permit for the fence, we don't go anything past that. I've got a bill of assurance that shows that, that he's not supposed to do it, but he's still gonna do it. So my only remedy is hopefully you guys, or take him to court, and that's gonna cost money, or seven on your side, or something like that, to give him a black eye to hopefully make him push back that fence just a hair bit so that nobody's gonna be... Other people's property rights are infringed upon. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. I believe I had spoke to Mr. Carter with code enforcement, told me that you might be coming in. And one of the things, and he's here, that may wanna comment, but my understanding is that the fence is not prohibited in its current location or where it's proposed to go in. I'm not sure if it's built or going to be built, but that we verified that it's in compliance with the code. As usual, we don't enforce bill of assurances. Those are done through what how are the bill of assurance says? And is that accurate, Mr. Carter?
Everything that we've done as far as the permitting and the investigation of where the fence is gonna go is according to the permit, as you listed. It's not over the property line, which is what we make sure of when we go out and inspect the location of where they mark it. The property pins are accurate according to the survey, as far as I know. I'm not a surveyor.
Looking at this, though, it's not. I took a video, a picture, and I can show you on my phone that shows this manhole right here. And that manhole, if you draw a line from it, he's right in the middle of that manhole, and his fence is not even supposed to be on the manhole. And he's putting the fence, even not on his property line, part of this. And I'm guessing this is supposed to be a certified engineer survey, and he's putting it where it's not supposed to be. Anybody can move a state and put a flag on it. I mean, who's to say he didn't do that? I could do that. I'm just, I don't understand how, when I'm looking at this, I'm not getting much due process here without having to spend a lot of money in court, when this could've been kept from happening way before this.
So, your issue is that, I don't know what you're holding up, sir.
Can I bring it up?
If you could just tell me what it is, that's good.
It's the permit. It's his certified permit. There's supposed to be a certified drawing from the, I guess, the engineer, or the surveyor, that shows where the setback lines are and where his property lines are. And he's even showing that he was going to abide by those lines when he first applied for this plot, or for this fence. But then he moved it over. But what's funny is, looking at this property line, this property line doesn't even go where he's putting the fence. This is a certified document, State of Arkansas, this survey.
So, it's a survey? Thank you. So, the best that I could say at a meeting like this where I haven't gone out and looked at is to ask Mr. Carter whether or not it was, appeared to be within the permitted place. I mean, you've seen the survey, Mr. Carter?
Yes, and as I said, where the property is marked, where the fence was proposed to go, and where the property pins are, which have been moved and replaced. Which I can attest to, because I just can follow the survey as it's recorded, so.
Okay. And so are there issues about the property? You're saying he's building it on your property?
No. I'm saying it's no issue. It's the utility company, if anybody's property. I guess whoever owns the easement road. Because our property lines don't go into the easement road.
Hmm.
Which I find strange, too. I thought the lines would be right down the middle, but if you look at the property...
We could take a look at that. And I guess the council's free to comment if they so choose. I don't know that this is the best venue to go into the details of the survey and whatnot. I can certainly take a look at it.
Just one quick question. What is your address?
2409 O'Point.
O'Nida?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's right off O'Nida Way. That's the very end of O'Nida Way.
Is that okay?
Is that Ward 2?
Yeah, it's Ward 2.
Okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Mosley?
That's all I was gonna ask, is where this, where you're located. You're in Osage Falls?
Osage, also, Osage Terrace Phase 2B. Lot, mine's 129, I think, and that one I'm talking about's lot 141.
140.
140, my bad.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just a curious question. Did I hear you to say that this fence is staked out such that the fence would actually go over utility cover?
Well, that's one thing. It would. There is a, two things that I can't believe you are allowing to happen, because I watched the gas company do it. There is a gas line right underneath where he dug his fence post. How he didn't hit one of those lines, I don't know. Second thing, right underneath there also is your stormwater drain that goes all the way down. Thing, I'll say that that's deeper than he would dig for a fence post, but to put a fence post in there and it be sturdy enough, how he missed that yellow pipe, I have no clue. But I can tell you this, if you look at the fence post, you've got one that's probably only that far down in the ground if you take the tape measure to it. So it might make like either he hit a rock, or he got real close to that pipe, which is another concern. And I saw the gas company come out there, because there is a $30,000 gas, or generator they put back there for the sump pump that they've got in case electricity goes out. And it's gas-driven, natural gas.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, this is in our ward, so if it's okay with you, can I come out to your place the next couple of days?
All day.
Okay. Yeah. Can I get your phone number to be of mind? All right. I'm looking at it on Google, so I see what you're talking about, so.
And the thing is also, I mean, when I built my house, I was my own G C. I wasn't a builder. These guys told me, you know, do this, do that. I did everything, everything by the book, even the bill of assurance. You've got a builder here that knows the ins and outs, so the ways to get away with things, and he's playing the system. And I was just wanting to voice my concern one way or another, to hopefully, again, I'm not asking for the whole five feet, because I don't think it needs to go back five feet, but just enough, give me a little leeway. But, and again, I think it's retaliation because of me having to call in, and I can show you the pictures of the mud that was that big in my backyard, that actually killed a bush, because it got so deep around it. And then, the driveway we had, it had about that much mud in it that we had to take shovels with to get out. And he always said, oh, we'll take care of it, we'll take care of it. And it was every day would get raining, April and May, it'd come right back down. And then it finally got so bad, that's when I finally called you guys, and I came out there and said, Brandon, you gotta do something. And then he texted me, saying, I can't believe you did that. I can't believe you called the city on it. And then next thing I know, you know, I'm thinking, he wouldn't have put a fence that close to it, but then next thing I see a line there, I thought it was just for surveying or something. And then I see the post up, and I'm like, oh my goodness, can't believe this. And then, wasn't gonna say anything, but then my neighbor said something to me about it, said, I can't believe you're allowing this to happen. I was like, I gotta do something with the silk fence. I don't think you're gonna listen to me. And then when I was backing up my truck yesterday with, or two days ago, with my trailer, noticed that I was gonna have issues with that fence being that close and not hitting that fence. Might not hit it tomorrow, but one day I won't be paying attention, too good attention, I'm gonna hit it. And I was just wanting, hopefully, one of you guys, somebody could talk some sense into it, push it back.
We'll call you tomorrow, if that's okay? Absolutely.
Councilmember Mosley?
I couldn't get my pen to work. What was your phone number again?
It's local, I mean.
Okay.
Thanks, Willie.
I'll call you, follow up. It sounds like your older member's gonna come out and look, so I'm not gonna get there while...
And I'll be there all day tomorrow. I work from home.
Thank you.
And everything, so that'd be cool.
Sounds good. Talk to you tomorrow.
Thank you. Next order of business is the financial statement review. Ms. Vega, the floor is yours.
Hi, everybody. We're going to look at the July 2019 financials. Okay, so our first slide is showing our fund balance comparison, and we're doing really well. The sanitation fund is 1% below budget. The street fund is 2% below budget, and the general fund is 7% above budget. We have $3.9 million more than required by ordinance 438. The city's general fund revenue is down 3% to budget, however, it is up 1.4% to prior year. County millage is up 2% to prior year. County sales tax is up 2% to prior year. City sales tax are down 6% to prior year. However, if you look back at 2017, because 2018 was an anomaly, because we had monies that came in from tax audits, we're up 12% over 2017. Franchise police and fire year-to-date collections is $742,000. Franchise fees are down 4% to prior year. And so the electric utility fees, they're down 3.5% to prior year. Phone and cable is down 6% to prior year, and water utilities are down 4% to prior year. The street fund overall, revenue is up 4% to prior year. County millage is up 6%. State turnback is up 1%, and street aid is up 4%. The sanitation revenue, sanitation's fees are up over 20% to prior year, primarily due to the increase in collections with C A W. On our general fund expenses, overall, the general funds are 8% under budget, 5% over prior year, primarily due to police and fire personnel. Administration is up 6%. Police is 2% below budget, 10% above prior year. Again, personnel and the loss of the 911 revenue. Fire is 3% under budget and 12% to prior, up to prior year due to personnel. Public works is 10% under budget and up 13% to prior year, and this is due to the personnel reallocation that we've talked about, ground maintenance and fuel costs. Parks are 9% under budget and up 10% over prior year, primarily due to the Rolling Oaks facility. Senior services are 10% under budget and up 15% over prior year, primarily due to personnel, building, maintenance, and concession supplies. City services are 23% under budget and 2% under prior year due to workers' comp insurance and street lighting. This is just a different way to look at the general fund spending. And everybody's budget is under 60%, which, if you do that over the months. Street fund expenditures are 30% under budget and 37% over prior year. Again, this is due to reallocations of employees between public works and streets. Operating expenditures are 71% under prior year, and again, it's due to unreimbursed third entrance expenses of $196,000. Sanitation expense, personnel is 9% under prior year, again, due to the reallocation. Operating is $46,000 over prior year, primarily due to the increase in vehicle maintenance, tipping fees, and professional fees for C A W. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Gardner?
Last year, I remember there was some discussion at the end of the year about senior services and being able to capture their revenue correctly. And from looking at what we have here, it looks like they've almost met their entire revenue expectations for the year. Is that because...
That is correct.
Those sources of income were clarified and properly attributed to them?
No, it has to do with the, they're actually growing.
Okay.
And they'll be growing even more because they've increased some of their fees.
Okay. Okay. That's just a big difference. So I wondered if y'all captured that revenue that was going somewhere else, or if it was because of growth, so.
It's because of growth.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was just trying to understand this correctly on the, I was looking at the year-to-year comparison on revenue in the general fund.
Uh-huh.
And the, you know, we don't have the community service fee anymore, so we're down $357,000, but we're up on the half-cent police and fire by $741,000. So we're actually bringing in twice as much money, I guess, as we would've under that community service fee, is that correct?
Well, we're not comparing the years because, correctly, with that scenario, because we collected community service fees from January to August, and then we got the half-cent cell from...
Okay, so it's not apples?
From September, you know, to the end of the year. And then this year, we just have that half-cent sales tax, but we do not have any revenue that's under the community service fee.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just saying, it looked like we were collecting twice as much as we would've under the community service. And then there's some other...
It is more, I don't know the magnitude.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no additional questions, comments, I'd entertain a motion to accept the financials.
So moved.
We've motioned a second to accept the financials. Any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. At this point in time, I'd entertain a procedural motion, have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. We have motion second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business, the first order of business is Resolution 2019-24, amending the 2019 street fund budget. Madam City Clerk Treacher, if you could read that by title only, please?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Marmell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2019-24, a resolution to amend the 2019 street fund budget.
So at the outset, I plan to ask that this resolution be tabled, but in the meantime, I do have a public comment card from Gibb Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to plead your case.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Gibb Carpenter and now live at 222 Mountain Terrace Circle. And I have found that if I read this, it works better than rambling, so with your indulgence, I'll read it. I have seen and read comments that have circulated suggesting the relatively low number of actual accidents at the intersection of Odom and Club Manor do not justify the reconfiguration to a roundabout. I personally pass through that intersection in different directions many times every day. And I can tell you that what those numbers do not reflect is the actual number of near misses that occur every day, the amount of frustration trying to find a break and pass across or to turn left, and the amount of wasted time and fuel, especially during peak hours. Homeowners living in Bell River, Club Manor, Kimberley Manor, River Run, and St. Thomas neighborhoods literally take their lives in their own hands every time they attempt to cross Odom to the center by the lake, or to the shopping and restaurant options that are on the north, and then again on their return. But I believe in, this is important, that this is not purely a safety cost value matter. As a city, we don't have to have playgrounds, ball fields, a pool, a community center. We have them because they are the infrastructure amenities that a first-class city deserves to serve its citizens. Accommodating the safe, smooth, and convenient flow of traffic is just such an infrastructure amenity. I strongly encourage the City Council to approve the resolution and to make the Odom Club Manor roundabout a reality.
Thank you, sir. So before that, I mentioned that I'm gonna ask that this be tabled at the last council meeting. There seemed to be some consensus, or at least some desire to actually get bids out. So the engineers are working on bids. The goal is to have an actual, let the bids go out. They think we're a week or two away from that, putting the bids out, then we'll get an actual price. There's been some discussions thinking, or some comments that it may come in significantly lower. The engineers are pretty confident at their number, which they refer to as $900,000, though we're asking for 1, 1. But, and then I haven't spoke with the city attorney to see if there's been any leeway on the, with energy and the switchgear.
I last heard from Energy on the 7th, and we exchanged a couple of emails, but basically said, I am looking at this and I will get back to you. That's where that is.
Councilmember Scott?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we table this resolution until the first meeting in October for time for those bids to come back and for us to review them.
Second.
First meeting in October.
I think that'll be enough time.
It's a month and a half. That's why I was choosing October.
Gotcha.
Unless you think that's too short a time.
We can go with that? I hope we can hit that. I haven't let out too many bids for roundabouts, though, in the past. So we had a motion to table to the first meeting in October. Was there a second on that? Yes. Okay. Councilmember Saunders? Yes. Your time is up, Mr. Carpenter.
Sit down.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, we had some discussion about a traffic signal there as opposed to a roundabout. I have been contacted by constituents, three, I believe, that like that idea better. So, but I did wanna check, have we... When I originally brought up the roundabout idea, it's because I was told that we can't have a traffic signal at that intersection because of its proximity to Marmell Boulevard. Have we done any research, or are we allowed to have a traffic signal?
I have not. I've reached out to R.D. Engineer today regarding the speed limit at, on Marmell Boulevard, and just left an email. Haven't heard back from him. When I get in touch with him, I can ask about that. I don't know.
Well, that might be a viable option, you know, it's just something we should explore if we can. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. If there are no additional comments, we do have a motion to table this to the first meeting in October and a second. Is there any further discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. Hopefully by October 1st, we'll have a real price on that, and hopefully more information on whether Energy will pay to relocate the switchgear. With that, the next order of business, so the agenda went out, and this following resolution was not in there. That was my fault. I didn't realize it until we got a phone call today asking if it was still on the agenda. That is Resolution 2019-25, capital improvement revenue bonds. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Marmell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2019-25, a resolution authorizing the offering of bonds by the City of Marmell, Arkansas, to refund certain outstanding bonds secured by franchise fee revenues of the city and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
And so I think we had a pretty good talk about this at the last meeting. We do have representatives from Stevens and Bond Council here, if there are any questions, comments. If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2019-25.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. So the goal is to be back here at the September 16th meeting, though we're gonna try and make sure we get the best rates that we can, since there's not a project waiting on this. We'll keep you informed at the meeting where the ordinance is presented. The goal will be to wait, read it three times, execute the emergency clause, the whole nine yards for bonds. Maybe we can get a draft of the ordinance even before that meeting and spread it out as soon as possible. But, just a heads up on that. Thank you all for coming out. The next order of business is the second reading of ordinance 983 to comply with Act 999. Madam City Clerk Treacher, if you could read that by title only, please?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marmell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 983, an ordinance to amend Ordinance 972 to comply with Act 999 of the 92nd General Assembly of Arkansas Legislature, the Small Wireless Facility Deployment Act.
I believe there was a couple minor changes on this in punctuation. I'll let the city attorney explain.
Yes, this is, that is correct. The attorney for Verizon actually sent me several changes, a couple of which I did not agree with, but this one I did. It was on page 11, 7C, and it's just, I mean, three... It was on page 11, 7C, and it's just, I mean, three, three items of punctuation were adjusted, so I don't believe it will require that it go back to first reading. Just makes it into two sentences, adjusts where the, the last sentence starts in that paragraph.
Thank you.
Motion to approve ordinance 983.
With second reading, so if there are no additional comments, yes. If there are no additional comments, it'll be on third reading at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
I'm going to make that motion then, too.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next order of business is Resolution 2019-23 regarding surplus property. This was read at the last meeting, but let's go ahead and get it read again. Madam City Clerk Treacher?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2019-23, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
So this is regarding the beautiful Chevy Blazer. Mr. Carter was not available at the last city council meeting, and so he can come on up and take the hot seat. There was a few questions last time from Councilmember Mosley, I know, had at least one. Mayor, councilmembers?
Yeah, my questions are, is this Blazer, is it, what is it, 2002, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And how many miles does it have?
A little over 80,000.
80,000 is on? Oh, my goodness.
Just goes around Mammell, though.
Okay, yeah, so it's not, we're not using it on the highway, then. What's wrong with it? Were we?
There's nothing wrong with it. This was something that was actually supposed to probably happen during Mr. Morley's tenure here. It's been sitting for a little over a year. We acquired a new vehicle, and then I was in that vehicle, and I moved to the next vehicle that was more, more recently purchased, I guess. This is something that's just sitting, we have four people in our department, but we have five vehicles. Now, if we choose to move it to another department, that's great, but our intention was to get rid of it through some sort of auction. At the time Mr. Morley was here, I was just trying to move that along.
So you guys have already acquired a replacement for that?
Yes, for more than a year ago.
All right, so we don't, we're not needing that. And is, is there 80,000 miles and the air conditioner works, transmission works?
Everything works very well. There was some work done to it a little over a year and a half ago. It may need a couple of tires, but outside of that, it works great.
Is there, is there any other department that might be able to use that? Parks and Rec, Public Works, Senior Center, or anything like that? Because it's 80,000 miles, that's pretty low miles on a vehicle.
Which is why we're getting such a high price, we think, at auction.
$2,000. I mean, it's.
I haven't asked all the department, if, departments, if they want this?
I'd just hate to see something that could be used gotten rid of to where somebody's got to buy a new vehicle for 18,000 or something like that. Let's see, I guess that's all I've got. I suppose if we okay it tonight, if somebody raises their hand saying we'd like that in our department, you could keep it, is that right?
Sure, sure, sure. This is just authorizing or approving the sale of the.
Yeah, I just, you know, something like that and giving away almost, so that's all I've got. Thank you. I, I may vote no on this, but thank you very much, appreciate it.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree with City Councilmember Mosley on this. If we have another department that can use it, we would be foolish to just sell it, you know, let another department have it. Maybe it, at the next department head meeting, I think you have those weekly, don't you?
Yes, sir.
You could bring that up and all the department heads.
Certainly could.
Maybe even tell them ahead of time, look at your vehicles, because I'm going to ask you.
Okay.
I think it would be appropriate. What are the mechanisms? If we approve this tonight, the sale of this vehicle tonight, you just said that we could, or somebody could go ahead and change it and let another department have it if they wanted it. Would it have to come back to us, or what mechanisms does it?
No, sir. Huh-uh.
No.
This is just authorizing, state law requires council approval, either state law or city law, at least one of them, maybe both.
Okay.
Require council approval for the disposal of surplus property.
Okay.
Above 1,000.
Right. Okay.
Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I looked at it a while ago. The interior is amazingly good condition. It needs to be cleaned up. I told him that I used to own my own detail shop, so I would bid on it myself, but I've watched enough auctions. That truck could bring $6,000 to $8,000 pretty easy. I mean, it's extraordinarily low mileage, and you're buying service and, and not your model, so I would say that, subject to it not being able to be used by another agency, that we would approve it being sold, but give it a chance to see if someone, one of our other agencies, because it's really, there's no dents in it, needs to be cleaned up real good. He said all the service is up to date, may need a couple of tires, but once you, it could be a very serviceable, he thinks it's a six-cylinder. So that's a good piece of merchandise. If I could afford it, I'd buy it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gardner?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-23.
Second.
Do you have a motion and second? I do have at least one more light. Councilmember Vapurzan?
My thought was, this has been sitting a year. Another month isn't going to hurt to see if we could find another department that would be interested in using it. I was just going to make, we'll let your resolution go first, because I was going to make a, a motion to table this for a month to see if another department would be interested in it. And then if nobody's interested in another month, then we sell it.
Councilmember Gardner?
My only thought was, this is a 17-year-old vehicle that's been sitting on the corner of a part, of our parking lot for a year. And if Director Carter felt it was appropriate to dispose of that, I don't feel, we, we've debated a $2,000 car now for quite a while, and so I respect his choice to bring it up and, and offer to dispose of it, so that's why I was going to go ahead and make that motion.
So, again, I can ask tomorrow if there's any departments that are just dying for a gem of a SUV, and if they are, we don't have to sell it. Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, we just need to remind them at budget time if they come and ask for a vehicle. We will, we have long memories.
That's, that's true. I'll do that, too.
Chief, how about another patrol vehicle?
I'm out.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
How about a retirement?
With that, with that, we do have a motion and a second approving Resolution 2019-23. Is there any additional comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
No.
Motion carries. We're moving on to the third reading of, the third reading of ordinance 982, amending Chapter 66 regarding street signs. Madam City Clerk Treacher, if you could read that by title only.
Be it enacted in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 982, an ordinance amending Chapter 66 of the Mammell City Code to require additional street signs indicating that a street is a private street.
And this is just that ordinance that would allow us to affix a larger private street sign to private street signs.
Motion to approve ordinance 982.
Second.
We have a motion and a second approving ordinance 982. Is there just any additional comments on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Vapurzan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance 982 is approved. We have no new business on the agenda, so we'll move on to mayor's comments. The first thing I wanted to address is jail fees. We've been talking about that at a recent, a good number of meetings recently. It appears as though, well, what we have is an agreement from Plaski County that they would agree to just a flat 25% increase, which is about 15,000, we currently pay 52,000, I would say, which is a super favorable compared to every other alternative that we had been asked. So that'll, of course, funding has to come through the City Council during budget time, but we might also anticipate an additional interlocal agreement for one year stating that as the price. So I think that's a win. It's odd to say a 25% price increase is a win. It is. Everyone, most people here attended the City Hall renovations, public hearing here. I don't really have a whole lot to talk about. It was pretty much only attended by council members, an individual on the planning commission, and an individual on the civil service commission, and spouses of council members, and of course, the engineers. And so that, I just wanted to give a recap. I think not a whole ton of the public wanted to get out in the rain, or necessarily cared that much about the C-Hall renovation. So, one of those two, and probably a combination of both. With that, the planning commission report will be following the next planning commission Councilmember comments? Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you again, Mayor. I just wanted to update everybody. We had, we voted as, as a council when the director of senior services was here to get a new passenger van or shuttle van. I was there this morning for a medical run, and I talked to the director, and they were, I haven't been back this afternoon, but they were scheduled to pick up that new van today at lunch. So congratulations to the senior center. Another thing that a lot of people aren't aware of, and we're trying to get the word out, because we have a testing period going on through, I believe, the end of next month, don't quote me on that, but we're starting a new service, driving shuttle service for our seniors here in Mammell. And that is, we can now take them to Walmarts. Now, that's a big service for, for our seniors. And remember, 37% of our populations are seniors. Now, it occurs on Mondays, they have to call ahead of time, preferably by Friday, to get, to get on the service, to get signed up. They pick up at 9:30 in the morning, and then they allow them to stay for an hour or two, whatever. So, if you can help get the word out, it might help a senior. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier in the year, either January, February, when our personnel, director of personnel spoke to us, and we were planning on having a survey made by other cities and comparing what wages were made and everything, and he had suggested that then, he was hoping to have it done by April or so. I spoke to him later in the year about June, and he said, well, you know, several things, but hoping to get done by July or so. But we're at the 19th day of August now, and we've not heard anything about personnel pay raises, and I wonder is that, is, where are we in the possibility of talking about our people getting raises?
Well, we can always talk about it, Councilmember Holt. I anticipated talking about it in the budget session. I think I've had the salaries at my desk for a month or two now. Get you a copy if that, if you'd like it, or you can get it from HR. And we can talk about it whenever you so choose.
Okay, microphone back in. It's just that I had hoped that we would be able to see our way clear to, to ratchet that up, and, and you know, without going into a sermon, we all know, these people are the backbone of our, of our city, and we talk about money for all the mechanical things, you know, around town, but there's nothing, there's nothing more important than our people. And to ask them to just say, well, we'll get to you, and we'll do it in budget, and then you'll get your raise next year and whatever, to ask them to wait, just to wait, they need money also. And, and so, I, I'm really very concerned about that, Mr. Mayor. I have not taken that amount of money from my raise, I've given that off to someplace else. I'm, I, I can't, I can't in clear conscience, I can't accept that money, so I've written a check every month equal to the raise to go to someplace else. I, I just, so anyway, that's my point, and I won't belay, you know, won't go any further. I just hope the council will, will see to it that we'll have a conscience in saying, those people need to be recognized, and we got our raise, and I was hoping that they would get theirs, and I appreciate your time.
Just to clarify for those newer to the council or in the audience, we do offer a merit raise that's up to 3%. Police and Fire have a step. Both of those will cap out at a certain point. You'll just reach the maximum amount that you can get there. The bulk of our employees, though, did receive a merit raise, probably 2.5% to 3%, depending on reviews. And then what Councilmember Holt is talking about is something above that, or something that would address it for those employees that are capped out. But, next up, I believe, is Councilmember Mosley.
Yeah, I had two items here. One is, you mentioned the speed limit on the Boulevard, you're going to be talking to RDOT about that, and I think the last council meeting, a couple of aldermen asked you to ask them to lower it. And I, I was going to say, I'm really, I want to go on the other side, count me as leaving it where it is. I'd, I'd kind of like to see people get down.
To follow up with that, my, my request wasn't to lower it, it was to figure out the steps to lower it, which would probably include a speed study. I think it would be proper that if the city is going to sort of recommend a speed limit change, that either come to the council or the Traffic and Parking Committee, I don't remember which off the top of my head, would be the one to do that, and it'd be the, the wards affected. So basically, everything north of Town Center Drive is 45, and then everything south is 50. So we just look at the wards, I think, for the Traffic and Parking Committee. But that was only your first point. And, and so that you can rest assured, I'm not saying the city wants that right now, we're just saying, how does this happen? What, what needs to occur?
Okay, okay, more information. Audit, I just, while we were having our meeting here, I forgot to ask, of, what are we, we're down to, we're just looking for an audit for 2018, is that correct?
Correct.
We've got, we're caught up, and seems like usually in the summers, when we hear from Mr. Kraft, are we kind of, by being off those years?
We are still, we're still behind. We're up on the year now, but, so the audits are due by June 30th, I think, to some of the, the folks, and so we have to have them by June 30th, wait, June 30th, yeah. Zero that at 31st, but 30th of June. We, we, we're still behind. Yeah.
Okay.
But we're at least now only behind to last year, so we're not looking two years back. Part of the reason I think that is, is because, for example, the first couple months of this year, all audit focus was on the 2017 audit. And so while we were caught up on paper, we were still, we were still a little bit behind.
Yeah. Have they done their field work yet for 2018, or is that still yet to go?
Part of it.
Part of it, okay. So we're, we're not looking until maybe the end of the year, best, maybe?
I hope not.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a daily topic around City Hall, so.
It's going to be very hard to get it, get it closed. I'm fixing to go on vacation in September.
It's all right, you can do that.
We'll watch the possible time. We've got budgets and, and audits that I thought would already be done.
That's all right, I was just asking for information, that's all. Thank you very much.
I was wondering what meeting that would come up at? But I knew who brought, who would bring it up. Councilmember Gardner?
Just a couple of things. This is more directed, I guess, to City Hall staff and, and our clerk. Today, there was a ransomware attack in Texas where they targeted 23 cities, smaller cities and towns. So this was just more of a reminder, I guess, for our city employees to be very diligent with what they open up, because it all came from opening up emails that shouldn't have been opened up. So, that, it was, it was a coordinated attack, apparently, and, and anybody, anybody can have their stuff locked up, and it is a big expense to get that unlocked. And even if you do pay a ransom, you may not get it. So I don't know what safeguards we have in place, but.
City Clerk Timmons?
Well, Councilmember Gardner, I'm glad you brought that up. I think the mayor thinks I'm a little obsessed with security, cybersecurity. We actually have been attempted ransomware, but because we have backup with our servers, we didn't have to, you know, participate, give them any money. But I am going to be asking for some additional funding this coming budget to keep us safe. I think we should back up to the cloud. I think that's our safest option.
Okay, good deal.
Not to mention, we periodically, an email will be sent out to all city employees saying something about, I don't know, your Amazon purchase is being shipped to the wrong address, and we'll go ahead and click on it, and so we can figure out. out. So we do internal tests to audit so that that doesn't happen. I don't mind making the news. I'd rather not be, because we paid money to not get access to what we...
And one other thing, this kinda goes along with the, the car from tonight. Um, I was surprised a couple of, a month or so ago, when the city tried to dispose of something that was only worth a few hundred dollars, and it had to come to the council for approval. And I thought, why in the world is an old piece, I think this, it was a Parks and Rec mower attachment. And I was like, why is that having to come to the council for approval? And I was surprised to learn that if it's over 100 bucks, it's gotta take up time on the agenda to be approved. And so I just wanted to say that in the future, I may look at sponsoring some sort of resolution to, to tweak that a little bit. Um, I'm all for the mayor reviewing a $101 monitor that needs to be looked over really well, or maybe a $99 monitor. But, uh, I, I think that could be raised. Uh, I, I trust our directors and I trust the mayor, but, um, I just thought for over 100 bucks to have to come to the council, I think we could bump that up somewhat.
Is that the city thing?
I think you may bump into state law.
Oh, is there state law regarding the amount? Do they set?
I'll look back at that. I know there are on, you know, bidding for projects and those things, but I believe there's also some state law on surplus.
It's $100, you think?
I'll, I'll look and make sure, but I think that's why it was set where it is.
Okay.
I think that might have been written back when $100, it'd get you a good 40 acres.
Thank you.
The ordinance 170, so that tells you it's been a while. 370, 86.
Okay, we're about to conclude. Councilmember comments? We're concluded. Uh, Madam City Attorney?
Uh, since we had spoken a little bit about franchise fees and I received this bulletin on the FCC rule change, I wanted to make sure I shared that. Um, I know we've talked some about other possibilities for the cables that are laid in the right-of-way. Uh, they did, um, state that, um, I'll just read it. It has also prohibited pursuant to the Act, local franchising authorities, which would be us, from regulating the provision of most non-cable services, including broadband, broadband internet access service that cable operators offer over their cable systems. So the FCC, and this also is gonna preempt state laws that do the same thing. Um, we're gonna be limited on what we can do as far as, uh, any income that is generated from those lines other than cable services.
Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I read that with a lot of interest. Thank you for sharing that with me. And the letter that was put on our desks tonight talks about why that is the way it is, that it, um, you know, discourages broadband deployment in rural areas and that kind of thing. And number one, that's not true. It's different pots of money that that happens. And they're using expense money to justify capital expenditures, and those are always separate in utility companies. Uh, plus, if a franchise fee exceeds, uh, at least in my day, I think it was 3%, then it has to be shown on the bill as a city tax, not as just invisible, an invisible franchise fee. So while I respect the FCC, and I've actually been on committees for them in Washington DC, um, I disagree with this, but there's nothing we can do about it. I just have to state my opinion.
Thank you. And thank you for sharing that with, with, with us. Madam City Attorney? City Clerk, comments?
I didn't receive any resumes or letters of interest for the open position on the tree board, so I will be re-advertising that. I just want to ask everyone, if you know of anyone who's interested, to let them know about the open position, and they certainly can contact me if they have any questions.
It's always so weird. It seems like sometimes we have four people battling it out for a seat, and then the next time, no one applies. Um, so, but it is the way it is. Couple FYIs, Chief Sam Williams Retirement Ceremony Celebration Party will be on the 3rd, is that right? Center on the leg from 3:00 to 5:30, so you'll have enough time to, uh, uh, leave there, hopefully not too intoxicated with punching cookies, and make your way over here to the council meeting, which is, be on a Tuesday next time, September 3rd. So, with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and second adjourn. All those in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? We are adjourned.